Good evening, welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, September 3rd, and please call roll.
Mayor Johnson.
President.
Councilmember Chapman.
Present.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Rutgers.
Here.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller. Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Nathan Weller notified us he could not be here tonight, do I hear a motion to excuse?
So moved second.
Moved to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under announcements tonight, we have a number of them. Pedal to the Palouse during the Palouse Bike Week, September 16th through the 21st. More information you can contact the Pullman Chamber of Commerce. Swing Devils of the Palouse host a free swing dance at the Daily Grind Espresso every second Friday of the month. A beginner east coast swing lesson will be taught from 6:30 to 7:00 p.m. And then the floor will be open for dancing from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. No experience or partner is necessary, just come and dance. You can go to swingdevils.org. September is the National Library Card Registration Month, and staff at Pullman Neil Public Library stand ready to help you explore and get you a card. And music on Main every Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Downtown Pullman, High Street Plaza, and Pullman's Farmers Market, open tomorrow, just all the way through October 16th, from 3:30 to 6:30. September is National Preparedness Month. Prepared, not scared, be ready. That's the motto. Pullman Police Department, Fire Department encourages all residents to be better prepared, to invite community members to join in that effort. We'll mention this as far in advance, but the 2019 Palouse Basin Water Summit will be October 10th, from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. At this SEL event center. And those are the announcements tonight. We have a number of presentations tonight, and I know you'll enjoy all of them. And tonight, we have, we'll start off with Ian Richardson, the CEO of a company called Proteum. And they were a company that went to the Paris Air Show. So we'll just, that's as much tease I'm gonna give. Ian, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you Glenn, good evening everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. So I'm Ian Richardson, I'm the CEO of the Proteum Company, and I was invited here to give a brief presentation on who we are, what we do, and why we're here in Pullman. So Proteum is a liquid hydrogen tank manufacturer for hydrogen electric drones, or unmanned aerial vehicles, UAVs. The company spun out of the Hydrogen Energy, Hydrogen Properties for Energy Research Laboratory at Washington State University, where the three co-founders, myself, Dr. Patrick Adam, and Eli Shoemake, all met as graduate students who were working on a variety of projects that all had some commercial applications, and we decided to see if we could push one of those to the market. So we also got some guidance and help from Iris Bomblin, who's also a COOG, and spent her career at Lockheed Martin as a vice president, and is now retired and an angel investor. And we quickly realized that we're three engineers and have no idea how to run a business, or scale a product, or take it to market. So we brought on free vector advisors for an equity stake in the company to provide legal and business advice, and they exclusively work with startup companies, helping them So looking at kind of unmanned aerial vehicles or drones, you really have three key metrics. You have reliability, you have capability, which is the payloads, the cameras you can put on it, and the sensors you can put on it, and the endurance, which is kind of the flight time, how long it'll stay in the air. So the first and most popular drone are high endurance, highly capable systems. And so when we talk about drones, this isn't your hobbyist drones you can go buy at Walmart or Costco. These are high end military and industrial drones, that are the 50 pounds to 1,000 pound class is what we're really focusing on. And so the first, the high endurance, high capable, use two and four stroke combustion engines, they can fly for eight to 10 hours, and they have sufficient electricity for all the sensors and cameras they need. But they're still limited by a two and four stroke engine. So if any of you have weed whackers, you realize that for a couple of years, it gets harder to start, it doesn't run quite as smoothly, that's a big problem for this industry. There's a lot of costs that goes into the maintenance and overhaul of these engines. The next class is kind of your multi-rotor, which is what you think of a traditional quadcopter that takes straight up off the ground. That's a highly reliable, highly capable system that runs on electric motors, batteries, very well known, but it only runs for 10 or 20 minutes. So it's fine if you're a hobbyist, just flying around in your backyard, you get bored after 10 minutes. But if you're using this for industrial or military applications, it's not very useful. The next class is kind of this high endurance, high reliable system, which is kind of those big solar wings that'll fly for days or weeks. They run on electric motors, they're highly reliable, but they really don't produce enough power to powerful enough sensors or cameras to do useful data collection. So this project really started in 2013, when the Aerospace Club at WSU was tasked with building the first liquid hydrogen fueled UAV for a university. That quickly got the attention of In Situ Inc., which is a subsidiary of Boeing that develops military UAVs for the 50 pound class. And they were looking at going for hydrogen drive trains to improve their reliability features, because they were using two-stroke engines, and they always required maintenance and overhaul, it was very expensive logistics. So they quickly latched onto this project. And so for those platforms, for a hydrogen drivetrain, typically have your hydrogen storage, which in a typical tank, you have a fuel cell that converts that hydrogen into electricity to drive an electric motor for propulsion, and then power for all of your sensors. And so what they were struggling on was the hydrogen storage aspect. They were using compressed gaseous hydrogen at 5,000 PSI, they still couldn't get enough hydrogen onboard their system to reach that eight hour minimum threshold, which is what their customers needed. So that's where they turned to the Hydrogen Lab at WSU, and my business partner Patrick Adam, to develop a lightweight liquid hydrogen tank that could get them the flight times they needed. And so Patrick's kind of brilliance in the design of his tank was that he incorporated a heat exchanger that's 3D printed in the walls of the tank. So liquid hydrogen's very cold, it's at minus 420 degrees Fahrenheit, so it's always absorbing heat from the atmosphere, and that's causing your liquid to vaporize. And that vapor gets routed through a heat exchanger, it's printed into the walls of the tank, and it comes out warm, which is a requirement of your fuel cell, so it doesn't freeze up. So you had a very elegant lightweight solution that could do that. And then what we found with that is that you can reduce the lifecycle cost in the ownership of these drone platforms by 30%, increase the reliability metrics by 400%, and you get 10 times the flight over batteries. So the next question is, how are you gonna fill a liquid hydrogen tank in remote locations anywhere in the world? So we're also working on that application. It only requires electricity and water to generate our liquid hydrogen. It's based out of the standard C-130 shipping container, so it's very easily transportable and can operate anywhere in the world. So as I mentioned, this originally started as a partnership with WSU and In Situ through a Jakarta grant sponsored by the state of Washington that funded the development work at WSU. That resulted in a patent being awarded in 2017, that's owned by WSU, and Proteum has exclusive rights to that patent, and it's currently under review in Europe, Japan, and Canada. So as part of this journey, the three co-founders realized that we really needed to get some business sense in this, so we started taking advantage of all the resources that WSU had to offer. We did the business plan competitions, and the local ICORD, which is mainly customer discovery and business model development. And that resulted in a successful Phase One small business grant from the NAC Science Foundation for $225,000, to really scale the technology and get the first prototypes built. It also got a lot of kind of international attention. We were a finalist in the aerospace track for Hello Tomorrow Global Challenge, which was also based out of Paris earlier this year. We were back there for the Paris Air Show with a Washington State cohort. And then we're also finalist in an H2 refuel accelerator with Toyota and Shell right now, looking to expand this technology out of the region to help with the global hydrogen market. So I've just talked about drones so far, that is our target market, but we're definitely looking much broader than this, and there's a lot of interest from broader applications. One of the first and kind of next steps is in the air taxi space, you hear Uber and Lyft all looking at these kind of projects, and also heavy lift drones kind of as a replacement for a crane on remote operating sites. And then also ground-based applications. And Shell's actually very interested in maritime, looking at ferries and cruise ships. A lot of the carbon emissions in Europe, everything's moving towards a zero emission electric drivetrain in the maritime application. So we've been slowly making headway over the years, bringing in different revenue streams. We've recently started consulting with Douglas County and WSU. We actually completed our first tank sale to WSU, that'll be finalized the end of the month, and that's to support a US Army project to develop a liquid hydrogen powered drone. And we're in discussions with Shell for a development project on kind of the larger size class, looking at maritime or mining vehicle type of size. And we partnered with In Situ on a clean energy fund through the state of Washington that was actually announced in June, that'll be awarded, and Proteum subcontracted on that for about a half million worth of consulting work, really doing the design and development work on the liquid hydrogen fueling station side, pairing that with renewable energy. And then we just applied for our Phase Two SBIR that'll fund the company in the next two years. And so all three of us are COOGs, we all live here in Pullman, and want to stay and grow this company here in Pullman. We have a great relationship with WSU and the research labs, and take advantage of all the resources that they have to offer. So it really doesn't make sense to do this anywhere else than right here in Pullman. And so we are looking to lease industrial space as we expand our manufacturing, and start looking to hire people early next year, and looking for a quarter million dollar convertible note, kind of in the early 2020 timeframe to help with that. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Questions, comments?
Yeah. This is really exciting. I, you know, being a WSU employee, I see like the WSU Insider posts and stuff, so I've seen some of the stuff before. I have a technical question, just out of my curiosity. The fuel production part of your plans, does that rely on clean freshwater, or is that potentially capable of pulling seawater for conversion?
You do have to purify it to DI water, so there are things you could do there with seawater, but yeah, maritime applications is definitely an interest, the Navy's quite interested, so. Yeah.
Years ago, I was at a National League of Cities meeting back in Orlando, Florida, and they introduced us to hydrogen, what they were using at Orlando Airport for all the buses. And the buses, you take a bus and you say, there's 100% about, maybe 20% of the back end of the bus was all for the hydrogen part, and it was Chevron that was doing the work with them at that time. I'm glad to hear Shell's, I mean, that Shell's with you right now.
Yes.
You know, and then you didn't hear much about hydrogen again for a while, so.
It did lose a lot of momentum. Part of that had to do with kind of DOE pivoting towards battery technologies. And now, there's still not a ton of federal funding for it, but there is a lot of private funding. There's a lot of companies that are investing in Shell and Toyota that are really pushing the industry forward, and Plug Power's a major forklift, a material manufacturer, material, moving material manufacturing, so.
But you can see with the airlines and the manufacturers there, that they definitely wanted to get into this field, and so.
Yeah, yeah.
So what kind of reception did you get at the Paris Air Show? Because I know you were there primarily to learn and to see things, but.
So I didn't actually go, it was a fun, Eli did though.
Oh, okay. So Eli.
Well, yeah.
You come over to the microphone. We realize you had to leave the CEO at home now, get the business, to pay for your trip.
The beautiful face here. But yeah, no, we had a lot of really good interactions there. I think the biggest thing for the Paris Air Show for us is it allows us to interact a lot with people in Europe that we wouldn't normally get to talk to. And I think the most exciting thing we saw at the Paris Air Show that nobody really expected this year, I saw a lot of articles coming out afterwards, talking about this, is it was really kind of the green electric air show for the first time. You know, nobody had really ever seen that before, and then a bunch of companies came out with very big plans, talking about electrification of aircraft, and how to do new electric regional flights. Both Siemens and Magnax, which is a little electric mutter company out of Seattle, actually, had very big announcements about their new electric motors, basically primed for the aviation market. So all that feeds right in, because once you have an electric aircraft, it's really easy to switch between batteries and a hydrogen platform, they both produce electricity. So that was very exciting for us.
Any other comments? So thank you so much for presenting today, we really appreciate that. Yeah, Aziz told me, he said, hey, you know, you need to get him before the council, I said, hey, no problem at all, we'll do that. And it was just, I'm glad we could finally get you on a day here, so thank you so much for presenting.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Next comes is our Art Fest report, and Joanna Bailey's gonna be covering for Jerry Harris, who is sick tonight. And I know that Joanna, you've got plenty of support here with you.
I sure do. We have members of the Grand Avenue Greenway Commission here, and they can certainly add anything to the Art Fest. They were there, they had a booth there, and they were, had their project, which we'll talk later about this evening, they had their project on display at Art Fest. But thanks, it's my pleasure to give you a report of this year's Pullman Art Fest. This is the fifth year that the Pullman Arts Commission has shepherded this event, and it's the first year that this event has happened under the new name, being Pullman Art Fest. The change in name was designed to reflect, better reflect all forms of art, and really give credence to the fact that this is a festival of the arts. So we, first let me leave with some thank yous. We, the commission, and I would like to thank the Lodging Tax Commission. We received $10,000 in grant money from that commission, and really use that money, the preponderance of that money, to go towards promotion, and specifically out of area promotion. And so we, the commission did things a little bit differently this year, where we, they took out ads in the Spokesman Review, they took out ads in the Inlander, they took out ads in the, oh heavens, now I'm blanking. Oh, Art Chowder Magazine. And so these were all venues that the commission had not previously explored, that really had the target audience of outside of Pullman. And as a result, we saw some change in how, in who attended Art Fest. And you'll see in your report that we had a decrease in the, in the number of people who traveled less than 49 miles away. But more importantly, we had an increase in the number of people who came from 50-plus miles away. So that would suggest that the, that it pays off to market to a broader audience, and then we attract those people coming in. To give you an idea of where people were coming from, we saw Enterprise Oregon, we saw Gig Harbor, Washington, Glendale, Arizona, Lakewood, Colorado, Olympia, Washington, Portland, Oregon, Salt Lake City, Utah, Tacoma, Washington, Vancouver, Washington. So it's very good. This year, we showcased works from over 57 hosted artists at 25 locations, and the street fair featured 13 nonprofits, three food vendors, one beer garden, and five music groups. So things were hopping. That is a 17% increase in participation over last year. We, I also want to make sure that I thank Avista and Kuanis. Avista gave a donation of $1,000, Kuanis gave a donation of $250. The donation from Avista helped fund the music, the music performance stage, and also pay our performers. The Kuanis donation helped fund art supplies for the children's art that was, that happened at the library. I also want to thank councilmembers Brandon Chapman, Pat Wright, and Nathan Weller for their support, onsite support at the festival. We need any kind of volunteer engagement that we can get, this is a big festival to put on, so really appreciate all of you stepping up and contributing in that way. Marking your calendars, next year's event is May 14th through the 16th. So please be aware of that. And then thanking Mayor Johnson again, as always, for the Mayor's Art Award. This year, that award went to Mitch and Mary Jo Chandler, very deserving recipients of that, that honor. Let's see here, we also want to thank a number of local businesses for their in-kind support. We have, as part of the street, as part of the Art Fest, community organizations and businesses offer baskets, which people then, as they visit the art installments, can get their tickets punched, and then they get, that turns into raffle tickets, and then they can put the raffle tickets in various jars for the prize that they want. So very quickly, I'd like to thank Portago Services, that was for their in-kind donation for restrooms, which you have to have. Poppy Salon, Palouse Country Candy, Northwest Tire and Paint Company, Roost, Friends of Neil Public Library, Cafe Moro, Rico's Pub, Nash's, Washington Idaho Symphony, B&amp;L Bicycles, Beth Semmings and Vanity Salon, Red Sage Cafe, Santa Me Jewelry, Pullman Civic Theater, Sam Dial Jr.'s Nail Art Spot. Takes a long time to say all those names, but it's important, because that's a lot of businesses supporting this event. So this truly is a community event, done by the community for the community. Happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments?
Just a comment, it was a lot of fun, so yeah, look forward to it next year.
Absolutely. Mark your calendar.
I already did.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joanna. Our next presentation is the Fourth of July report from the Police Department. Gary Jenkins, our Police Chief.
So first I'd like to point out that Adam did not approve my request to go to the Paris Air Show, even though our drone program could have greatly benefited from that.
Your drone program, I know, you were gonna try and take it all the road.
So it was pointed out to me that there's an issue with the name of my document, and as I'm looking at my report to you, that's the least of the problems with this report. This is a case of cut and paste gone awry. So I apologize profusely for all of the errors in here, but let me start with what's accurate. The table on the front page is accurate, showing the calls, total calls and fireworks calls since 2006, and the table on the back of all the calls this year during 2019, and the top of it should be titled 2019, and not 2018. So instead, the report does say there was a decrease, that was from last year, we did have an increase this year of 54%, but that only brings us up to a number that's essentially the same level of the average for the past five years, and is less than the average since 2006. So our calls are staying fairly consistent, no big issues with fireworks, but we did have a number of calls that we responded to. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions. And our Fire Chief is right close by, and Mike told us this morning during department head meeting, he had some really good news to report, so let's, Mike, share that with the council.
Well, my report was accurate, so. We didn't do a report, it was very quiet, the stands are all very cooperative with us, we patrol the streets for the 3rd and the 4th, and didn't have to confiscate anything, and we only responded to two small calls, which they were both out on arrival, couldn't even find Harley. So it was a very quiet Fourth of July, so we were very happy with that.
We hope we can continue with that. Eileen?
I have kind of an odd, kind of off-the-wall question for both of our chiefs. It seemed to me that Saturday night after the football game was quiet as well, is that correct impression?
Yeah, it was quiet, no couch burning or anything like that. We were fairly busy at the game, with lots of alcohol-related calls, and a few afterwards, but it was a normal Saturday night, so.
Same for this.
And with a win, yes, go COOGs.
All right.
All right, the next is not on your agenda, but I'd like, I have asked Laura and Pete to have some comments, because during the past couple of weeks, we've been receiving council, mayor, city, a number of different letters, notes, about Poe's building project, it was on Johnson. There's also, Pat raised also some issues that about RV parking at Shopko. And so I've asked Pete and Laura to make some comments on that tonight, just so the public can understand what we as council members and mayors are subjected to, in terms of quasi-judicial, and some other things that we need to go through. So with that, Pete, I think you have a flow chart and everything else?
I do.
Let the public know what's going on.
Got a fancy flow chart to share with you, take one and pass it around. When the city receives development permit applications, then we act on them in accordance with state and local law. The flow chart shows two basic processes. The column on the left has to do with zone changes, rezones, that zoning map changes, and also preliminary paths, or new subdivisions in the city. And you can see with respect to those applications, that there are some, oftentimes there are some preliminary applications that staff deals with, having to do with shoreline permits, critical areas report, primarily related to wetlands, and an environmental checklist. And then the matter goes to the Planning Commission at a public hearing for their review and recommendation to the council, and then finally, the city council makes the final action at a public meeting. If that decision is appealed by the council, then it goes to Whitman County Superior Court. So that's how those applications are processed. Conditional use permits and zoning code variances, those are processed in much the same way at the outset, if there are applications for shoreline permit, or critical areas report, environmental checklist, and those are processed by staff. And then they go directly to the Board of Adjustment at a public hearing, and they make the final decision on that matter, also appealable directly to Whitman County Superior Court. So that's the basic layout for the application process that we wanted to share with you tonight.
So I want to make sure it's very clear that that's the reason why some people were saying things to the council members, but it goes to either Board of Adjustment or planning before we ever see it. In this particular case, it goes to the Board of Adjustment, the one that this was.
Correct. Right.
Now, there was another question raised, and you could raise it right now at this point, about, there were comments that Shopko, the owner of Shopko, the woman who owns it out of Portland, was taking money or something like that to put RVs in there, because Walmart no longer would take RVs. And that went, didn't have the permit process, or however that.
Correct. If RVs are being parked in a particular area for compensation, then it's considered to be a recreational vehicle park, for which there is a process that they need to go through according to zoning code standards. And so that process is available to them, but it is rather lengthy, two, three, maybe four months, depending on the circumstances. And so in many cases, people hear about that, and then they decide to go a different path.
Laura, any comments you would like to add?
No, I think Pete explained it all. I know it is difficult when you, when someone approaches you and wants to ask a question about something, and you have to say, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you about that. I didn't get a chance to talk to Pete, but perhaps we can put this flow chart up on the city's website, so that you then have something to point citizens to, to explain if it's an issue that they're coming to their elected officials to talk about, why you as elected officials might not be able to discuss that project with them. But you can certainly always encourage them to still exercise their rights as citizens, and attend the hearings that will be held on any application, either the Planning Commission level, or at the Board of Adjustment level.
And most of them sent emails and sent letters in, so I.
And so then those get included in the record, the Planning Department. If you get an email or a letter about it, and you see that it hasn't gone to the Planning Department, you should forward it, so that then that citizen's comments are included in the record for that application.
They were coming in hot and furious, I thought we could go, so I saw, and I said, okay, I know Pete's got this one, so I made sure he just kept sending them, and.
Thank you, Mayor.
Got everything taken care of that way, so just to make sure.
I just have a question for some clarification. So when it comes to conditional use permits and zoning variances, the city council has no authority or control over everything, it's completely the Board of Adjustment?
On those individual cases, yes.
So that nothing would ever come to us for a vote?
Correct. Not under the current scheme.
What is the current, is that a city code, or is that state?
It's also a state law, that a city, a code city with population over 2,500 must have a Board of Adjustment. And then the city council decides which matters go to a Board of Adjustment, or to your Planning Commission or Planning Agency, through city code provisions. So that's, city council's role is to, one, set the code, the city code, for which one of those entities hears applications. And then the council, the mayor appoints people to those, to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Adjustment, and then the council has to affirm that appointment. So council has really two very important roles in the process.
Okay. Eileen, that'll go to Brent.
So, again, to kind of flesh out what Mr. Sorensen said, was if a person is, if a permit process is on the conditional use permit zoning code variance path, at no point, I want to make this sparkling clear, at no point does the council have a say-so in that.
You would not rule on that individual permit application, correct?
So when we see things printed in the newspaper that says city council is considering approving, that's not accurate?
Exactly, that is not accurate.
There's no, there's no role there for council.
That's correct.
I'm gonna say it at least three times, so get used to it.
Yep, that's accurate.
And also, when I read here that says that matters can be appealed to the city council. I, matters are appealed to Superior Court under the Land Use Act, so that. So that, that was printed as a letter, as an opinion in the paper, was also incorrect.
Yes, if a letter said that there's an appeal to the City Council, under none of these applications is it an appeal. Planning Commission makes recommendations on the items, the zone changes, rezones, preliminary plats, recommendations to the City Council. And that's when you're conducting a quasi-judicial hearing on those recommendations. And your decision is final on Planning Commission recommendations. And then the Board of Adjustment decision is final on Board of Adjustment actions. And you're correct, the only appeal is to Whitman County Superior Court.
Okay, and so we do indeed have some measure of control as to who the individuals are that sit on these bodies.
Correct.
But that's sort of a tertiary and quaternary form of control that makes it difficult for us to explain this to people who are unhappy about a certain thing they may have heard about. So we will be referring people to this flow chart, and that should, and we have no decisions about what types of projects there are, we have no say-so in what. Because people come to us all the time and say, "Why are you allowing this and not allowing that?" And a lot of times, I don't have any answers for them, because for one thing, I sometimes don't know what.
It's not something that you work on, yeah. And I think that is difficult for people to understand, it's not unique to Pullman. This is all governed by, for code cities, under 35A 63. So this whole process is laid out for a code city like Pullman and state law.
Thank you, that helps. I mean, I want to make people comfortable, you know, I don't want to just blow them off, but I also want to make our relationship with our, with our community as clear and as pleasant as possible.
Mayor, it may also help, so there are a lot, many, many laws regarding any type of land use action. And the purpose of those laws, at the state level and at the local level, is to make sure that every land use application gets the exact same process in consideration. And honestly, having the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment systems, mandates that it takes it out of the direct hands of elected officials, which then takes the political element out of certain land use decisions. Because, you know, people get upset and emotional about land use, especially if it's next door, or in their backyard, and all of that. So the whole purpose behind the statute is to make sure that every property owner's right to use their property in accordance with the law is protected, and that the exact same process and procedure and neutral proceeding happens at the local level. And then you always have that right of appeal through the judicial system, through the court system, as a property owner or as a developer. And that's, that goes both ways, whether you're the proponent of a project, and you're a developer putting it in, or you're someone withstanding, who believes that it's going to be harmful to you. You also have the right to appeal a decision under the Land Use Petition Act. So it protects parties on all sides. It is, it's very procedural, but the whole process behind procedural requirements is that you're protecting people's property rights.
Bren.
Thank you. So Laura, I just want to make sure I understand. So if I'm looking under the conditional use permit section, the zoning code variances on the right-hand column, so is this making an assumption that everything else fits within the prescribed code, zone, anything like that, aside from what they're applying for that might be a conditional use or a variance?
Well, if it fits within the code, it's permitted. And you get, if your property is zoned commercial, you get to use your property for commercial purposes without going through any process whatsoever. The City Council in adopting the zoning map has already decided that this area of town is appropriate for commercial uses. So it's permitted. When you apply for one of these things, it's because it's outside of the permitted requirements. And, for example, conditional use permits are ways by which you can, with conditions imposed by the Board of Adjustment, use your property in a way that's different than the underlying zoning. And it can be that the conditional use is only available under certain conditions and in certain situations. So it just provides a process by which people can ask for exceptions to the zoning code.
One of the things that we do early on, when we receive a conditional use permit application, or a zoning code variance application, is we review the entire proposal that's been submitted to make sure that they haven't omitted some variance request, and that everything else outside of those conditional uses or variances complies with code.
On one hand, I really like the simplicity. If we were to have suggestions for this, such as public input versus a public hearing, which I think is still, that's a confusion, I think, for a lot of folks who might have thought that this was their only chance to be heard. Maybe we could add that in there, wherever that public input portion is.
Boy, that's difficult when you've got a quasi-judicial situation. So basically, everything, all the public input needs to be directed to that public hearing, wherever, whichever process you're talking about. And that particular committee, be it the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, City Council, needs to review it on the record, based on the evidence that's presented to them. So a public input session, I think, would be inappropriate in the case of quasi-judicial.
However, people did send you the.
No, that's what I'm talking about, is receiving those emails in this case, I mean.
So they were all put in the record, the ones that's done.
They were put in the record. And just to clarify, all of the comments that we've received so far have been with regard to the shoreline permit application.
Yeah.
So there's actually multiple opportunities for public input, depending on the nature of the project. But in terms of whether there can be multiple opportunities for public input, actually, state law says no. A property owner or developer is entitled to a single hearing on the record. So it often can get tricky, making sure that a project is going through all the different avenues between zoning, between public works, and with the SEPA process, to make sure that we're not violating anybody's right to a single record hearing. So that's, that's why, like, think of the Planning Commission. When the Planning Commission matters come to the City Council, you're not allowed to add anything to the record, remember? So that's because the record's already been created in that single hearing opportunity. You can send it back to Planning Commission with questions for them to answer in terms of their recommendation to you, but they couldn't reopen and have a second hearing on the same application.
And Pete is very clear, as you recall, when we have our afterthought meeting. Okay, you cannot take any new testimony, it makes it very, very clear to every one of us. Point of clarification, maybe, if, but you can't take anything new.
Correct.
Okay. So we want to start out that way, because I know a lot of you have been getting different kind of comments. Yes?
I think council.
I just want to make another comment here. You know, I'm a firm believer in the zoning, the codes, and everything that we put into place as a city over the years. And that, I understand there are zone change requests, there are conditional use permit requests, but, you know, we put those on the books for a reason. And I think those need to be followed. And that whenever the Planning Commission, or the Board of Adjustment, is going to allow something to occur, that it's really thought out and planned well. Because we, as a City Council, have no control over anything that the Board of Adjustment does. We do over Planning Commission a little bit. But I just wanted it to be known that I think we have laws and rules and regulations for a reason.
With that, we will now move on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. Would you appear a motion to read by title on mic?
So move. Second.
Move in second, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 13, 2019, and approve the mess submitted. A motion approving dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 96916 through 97014, totaling $886,380.38. A motion approving dispersments represented by accounts payable checks, numbered 97015 through 97063, totaling $670,679.25. A motion to accept the Police Department Emergency Generator Replacement Contract Number 18-12 as complete. Resolution Number R-60-19, a resolution accepting the bid of the Moscow Pullman Daily News for legal publication, and authorizing the designation of the Moscow Pullman Daily News as the official newspaper of the City of Pullman. Resolution Number R-61-19, a resolution setting September 24, 2019, as the date for a public hearing to consider adoption of a six-year capital improvement program for the City of Pullman for the years 2020 through 2025. Resolution Number R-62-19, a resolution setting September 24, 2019, as the date for a public hearing to consider adoption of a six-year transportation improvement program for the City of Pullman for the years 2020 through 2025. And Resolution Number R-63-19, a resolution setting a date for a public hearing to consider the six-year transit development plan for 2019 through 2024 and 2018 Transit Annual Report for the City of Pullman.
Senator McConsul, would like to offer discussion. Seeing that the consent agenda consists of items one through seven, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move, second.
Move in second, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to our regular agenda. Item number one is a resolution approving a final plat of Paradise Hills subdivision, authorizing the mayor, the finance, and administrative services director to sign the final plat. With that, Kevin Gartis.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. The item before you is a resolution accepting the final plat of Paradise Hills subdivision number nine. The preliminary plat of Paradise Hills subdivision number eight was for the division of approximately 43.2 acres into 76 lots within the Paradise Hills development on the westerly end of Terraview Drive. The council approved the preliminary plat on March 14, 2017. The developer has chosen to final plat the property in phases. Council previously approved the first phase of the final plat of Paradise Hills Eight, which included the Cameack School Site. The second phase, which is before you now, consists of 6.98 acres with 19 building lots. It includes a section of Northwest Canyon View Drive, and the beginning of one new street, Northwest Overlook Drive. Of note with this phase is the addition of traffic calming on Northwest Canyon View Drive, which includes two areas of lane narrowing to 20 feet in width from our standard street width of 33 feet. One of the lane narrowing areas will be constructed with this phase. Sidewalks for this subdivision fall under the previous design standards that allow for three years to complete. A letter of direction has been prepared to guarantee the construction of improvements, and to appropriately warrant the maintenance of improvements. It's staff's recommendation that the final plat of Paradise Hills subdivision number nine be accepted by council, and that you authorize the mayor and finance administrative services director to sign the final plat. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Kevin on this?
Go ahead.
So I realize, under the, I don't know, vested rights doctrine, things that are in place when a preliminary plat comes forward, that's kind of the rules that govern that. So I did see the three years they get for the sidewalk, and I, I mean, this is putting you on the spot, but do you have an idea of how many projects out there are past that preliminary plat, yet still will be using the three years for the sidewalks, because they haven't hit that final plat yet?
There could be a couple more phases with this subdivision, with the original preliminary plat of Paradise Hills number eight, so that would be one. I think the Atanys may have one on Center Street that's still left to go. Pete, can you think of any?
I was looking at the list yesterday, and I believe there's two other preliminary plats that may fall under that category.
Serene Summit.
Serene Summit.
Which hasn't, we had, just approved construction plans, but it won't happen this year.
I'm excited to see the one year actually implemented.
Yeah.
So the, could you explain the traffic calming measures that are being put in place? I know there are a few other subdivisions. As far as I'm aware, Sundance is one of them. We've got Sunnyside Heights 10 and 11. They don't have traffic calming required as part of that, but this one does. Could you explain just the difference?
Yeah. I don't know if council would remember, but as part of the Center Street safety study we did a few years ago, we looked at various traffic calming measures. And in the toolbox were a number of them. The speed signs that we put up were one, that was kind of the low-cost initial work. Traffic circles were another. Narrowing was one, and then speed bumps would have been another one. There was a lot of comment during the preliminary plat phase about cut-through traffic, perhaps using Canyon View Drive as a shortcut. And the developer proposed putting traffic calming in as part of their construction plans, and we thought it was a good idea to try out the narrowing. We had thought traffic circles on Center Street, so this would be an opportunity to try a couple different of these ideas out, and see how they work. So that's kind of the background on it.
Okay. I've got one more, unless that wasn't.
You have four, so.
Okay. I'm all for, absolutely all for, the traffic calming measures. I know that this is, I mean, it's independent of what we're going to talk about with Harvest Drive, but, I mean, this is a residential street, so I guess I'm going to go back to Greyhound Way and the discussions that we've had attaching two arterial streets. But rather than do that, we're going to connect through to what is a residential street. So, you know, in terms of planning that out, I'm trying to figure out where we've decided to not continue that. I mean, I know that that was a discussion point. I know when Cameack Elementary School came up, the comment was made that at some point in the future, development would occur, we would have development help pay for the continuation of Greyhound Way. When development did happen, it was brought up in a Planning Commission meeting. Are we going to have the developer help pay for that? Not in this phase. So I'm trying to figure out, what phase are we going to have that happen, so that we don't have another Harvest Drive? And so, because I do want the traffic calming measures, I'm just trying to figure out, thinking through things, I mean, this is predictable. I think it's predictable, and if it's predictable, it's preventable. So how do we prevent that from happening here?
Well, I think I'll take a stab at what I think the question is. A requirement that we talked about with the preliminary plating of Paradise Hills number eight was having two connections. Canyon View was always meant to connect through. So the developer had an option of looking at running around and connecting Terraview Drive to Greyhound Way. That would have added significant cost, there were a lot of utilities, grading, a lot of things that would have had to go in. As far as we were concerned, having the second access as part of this plat met our requirements for having two accesses, with the idea that Terraview would go around and connect to Greyhound Way eventually. So, I mean, it's like a lot of subdivisions in the city. The planning, the master planning, eventually the connection gets made. It just takes a few years and some development projects to make it happen. But as part of this plat that council approved, there are two connections.
I'm just, I'm trying to reconcile the, I'm trying to figure out if it's Paradise Hills 15, 19, I mean, at what point would we say, "Hey, you know, we're going to have a developer help pay for this infrastructure," or at that point, I mean, they're already done? So then do we bear that cost, or?
No, the developer still owns land that can be served by the continuation of Terraview Drive to connect to Greyhound Way. So it's not part of the preliminary plat that council approved previously, but it would likely be part of a future preliminary plat.
Is the Greyhound Way right now, is that the gravel emergency only?
No, that's, in concept, would be an alley that would go behind some houses that would front onto Terraview Drive, with the idea that we didn't want driveways on Terraview Drive. So the developer thought ahead, and where that gravel access road is would be an alley to serve those houses that would front Terraview.
Is that maintained in terms of snowplows?
Not at this time, it's not.
Okay. Are you?
Yeah.
Al.
Guess what I'm going to ask about sidewalks?
Yeah.
What was our date, do you remember or recall, when we made it the one-year deal?
It was part of the design standards conversation. I want to say it was a little over a year ago, maybe, but Adam may be able to pull it up.
I'll find it.
Okay. And I know that Steve Mader was part of the discussion about sidewalks being required by developers early on in the project. And I know that when I asked him the question if it was required of him to put them in, he just put them in. That was part of the deal. When we have these ones that are, whatever brand the grant bought or this kind of coming from before, is there any discussion with the developers in regards to suggesting to them that they maybe accelerate their sidewalk input?
Not necessarily from my end, but the developer, when we were talking about the letter of direction and the security, thought that, I mean, he just threw it out there that he may do it early because he thought he could get a good price just to put them all in up front. There's no guarantee that that'll happen, but I know he was thinking about it, and I believe he said he had offers on quite a few of the lots. So assuming that council approves the final plat tonight and it gets recorded this week, I believe we have one house planned that's ready to be permitted once the final plat's done. So I think there'll be a fair amount of interest in this particular subdivision, and it'll go fairly quickly, would be my guess.
Okay. I just, I continue to have the concern about people walking in the street in neighborhoods without sidewalks, and it's dangerous. So if in the conversations of these developers, I would really like for you to suggest or ask that, you know, we've passed this and it's going to be happening, if there's any way they could, you know, move forward a little sooner than normal, that would be great. I have a, I do have some other questions in reference to Brandon a little bit too about the connection of the streets and Greyhound Way and Terra View. You know, I think when we do some of this planning about arterial streets and things, you know, we are growing like crazy, and we all know that. And the neighborhoods are spreading out, and we're grabbing collectors and things, and we really need to continue to have streets that will flow, not through neighborhoods. And, you know, connecting Terra View to Greyhound Way, I think, should be a priority. I understand, you know, development is what pays for that stuff, but, you know, estimates and that type of thing to put the streets in and connect or sometimes there's reasons to put it in beforehand. And I just, I hate these neighborhoods one way in, one way out, and I understand you say we're going to have two now, but it also takes it right through a more residential neighborhood. All the calming measures in the world still take you through a residential neighborhood. Those are just my comments.
Eileen.
Yeah, I would second that, and everybody's heard me say this. I grew up in a very nice, quiet neighborhood with paved streets, many of which have become cut-through streets, and it has completely changed the character of the neighborhood. And my grand nephews no longer can play out in front of their house where I could fifty years ago. So that's kind of where I benchmark this, is at fifty years. As Al says, we need to be thinking fifty years out on how we plan how these streets flow. I think putting in the traffic calming measures upfront, I think, is absolutely the way to go, so they do not become cut-through streets at any point. They don't become cut-through streets ever, and it sort of, you know, kind of forces us to think, in fifty years, where are we going to want buses? Where are we going to want whatever the next thing is in transportation? Rather than just kind of incrementally letting the city creep out, and then oops, all of a sudden we have a cut-through, now we're trying to decide what to do with it. So yeah, that, I think that twenty, thirty, fifty-year horizon on plating, plotting residential streets is the way for us to be thinking.
Other comments? If not, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
We're looking for the numbers.
Move to adopt resolution R dash sixty-four dash nineteen.
Second. Move to second. For?
Resolution number R dash sixty-four dash nineteen, a resolution approving the final plat of Paradise Hills subdivision number nine and authorizing the mayor and the finance and administrative services director to sign the final plat.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we go to item number two, is a resolution authorizing execution of an engineering services agreement between the city and Keller Associates. Once again, Kevin Gartis.
Thank you, mayor. In October of twenty eighteen, as a result of routine sampling of a stormwater outfall, city staff found high coliform levels in the discharge from a south street storm drain to the south fork of the Palouse River. Quick investigation on the city's part determined the problem was a sanitary sewer line that was leaking into an adjacent storm drain line. Ecology was notified at that time. City MNO staff instituted a temporary fix immediately, and the engineering staff began design of permanent improvements that were subsequently bid, and construction was recently completed. The Department of Ecology sent the city a letter in January of this year requesting the city update its O and M manual for the collection system. City staff contacted Keller and Associates and negotiated a scope and budget to meet ecology requirements for the O and M manual update. City staff budgeted funds in twenty twenty to develop a general sewer plan update, so the timing is good on that part, and this work would be incorporated into that plan. Staffing benchmark analysis for sanitary and storm drain collection system O and M is included and will be important with MNO strategic planning work that is just beginning. And I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions on this one? Seeing none, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution number R dash sixty-five dash nineteen. Second.
Move to second. For?
Resolution number R dash sixty-five dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services agreement between the city of Pullman and Keller Associates, Inc., for a sewer collection operations and maintenance plan evaluation and update.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three is a motion to authorize change order between the city and A W C G I S Consortium. And with that, item I T, Wayne Brack.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you is a change order to authorize for more hours of additional work between the Association of Washington Cities and the Association of Washington Cities G I S Consortium. As we near our completion of our parcel area, we're making, we're asking for authorization of a second change order for an additional three hundred hours to complete our parcel base, along with a hundred and forty-five hours for program development. I believe this is going to get us through the end of twenty nineteen, where we've planned to hire somebody for twenty twenty to take the program over. I'll try to answer any questions.
Questions of Wayne on this? You've actually had him here just, what, last week or so?
Two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, yes.
Any, if I don't hear any more questions, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I got a second.
This is a motion to authorize change order number two between the city and A W C G I S Consortium for additional work hours. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four is a motion to allow the finance department to take the necessary steps to properly redeem two thousand and nine water and sewer revenue bonds. Properly redeem, that's.
That's intentional, yes.
That's the only way we should be doing this, properly.
It holds to be the higher standard, thank you. Good evening, council. As the mayor stated, I'm before you tonight to properly, ask you to properly redeem these bonds. So what we've done so far at this point in the day is we've sent a conditional notice of redemption to our bondholders, which we're required to do thirty days ahead of calling these bonds, and it's conditional because I'm before you tonight looking for the approval to finish the process in doing this. So what we have here is a two thousand and nine revenue bond for water and sewer. This was used to do the regional airport fire flow and the well eight and booster ten projects. And as typical, when Public Works goes out, they try to do a ten-year bond, and if you look at the date of this, two thousand and nine, well, the bond market was a little different, and the banks were a little more anyway. So they weren't willing to do a ten-year bond, they were willing to do a twenty-year bond with a ten-year early call after the coupon on September first of two thousand and nineteen. Well, now that we've hit that coupon date, we're looking at the payment schedule, and I'm seeing four point seven five percent in twenty twenty-nine on the last one, and we can put that money to use better at the city right now. There's over twenty million dollars worth of reserves in the Public Works area. By doing this early call of one point five nine million dollars plus any accrued interest between the September first coupon date and the September twenty-fifth date, it's going to be a couple thousand dollars. No Public Works projects will be postponed or unnecessarily delayed, as per my discussions with Director Kevin Gartis. So what we have for you tonight is the request to allow me to continue the process, let the bond council know the condition has been improved by a council, and then we can get these bonds redeemed and save the taxpayers about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the term of this bond.
Okay, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to operate.
Okay.
Second.
Move to second. Motion to allow the finance department to take the necessary steps to properly redeem the two thousand and nine water and sewer revenue bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Saving the taxpayer four hundred thousand dollars plus, the way to go. Thank you, Annika Urban, finance director. Next, Joanna Bailey comes back to the podium with a motion to accept donation of the bookmobile as a permanent installment to the city's art collection.
Thank you, mayor and council. So continuing to talk about art, tonight I bring before you a proposal from the Pullman Arts Commission to add the bookmobile to the city's art collection. So the bookmobile sculpture was jointly commissioned between the Grand Avenue Greenway Committee and the Ingleside Book Club, and they commissioned the local metal artist Shelley Gilmore to honor the community's agricultural heritage and celebrate reading and education. The sculpture supports the Greenways' mission to beautify spaces along Grand Avenue and also recognizes the centennial anniversary of the Ingleside Book Club. As you saw in your proposal, the sculpture includes three sitting areas and one mobile. The artist was intentional about including various farm implements into that design, and it also, in a play on words, includes a mobile, a bookmobile. The book covers in the mobile include a scene from the Palouse, also a wheat seed head, a stenciled metal panel from an old combine, and a cover with gears which is intended to simulate ingenuity and education. Knowing that this art was going to be available to the public and that likely the public would want to engage with the art, but to do so in a safe way, the artist researched playground safety guidelines indicated in the Consumer Product Safety Commission Handbook for Public Playground Safety from December of twenty fifteen. And so to that end, all the sharp edges, the corners, the points, and the sculpture pieces were smoothed to avoid potential injuries, and then the pieces were in-ground mounted to provide stable installation. On the mobile, the double tree is welded into position to give the viewer the perception or the impression of movement, but the books hanging from the double tree are the only items in the mobile that are actually free-hanging. The pieces are treated with a rust converter to seal out moisture and prevent further rust. The artist treated that with a boiled linseed oil to deter the rust and also resist vandalism. The Grand Avenue Greenway Committee and the city Parks and Recreation Department are committed to applying additional treatments of that linseed oil through the years to maintain the integrity of the surface. The value of this gift is four thousand dollars. The Grand Avenue Greenway Committee and the Parks and Recreation Departments agreed to provide ongoing maintenance of the art with funding for any needed repairs to be provided by the Grand Avenue Greenway. The Pullman Arts Commission reviewed the project estimate request, which is in your packet, at their April ninth meeting, and they voted to defer the decision about whether to bring this to you for recommendation until after Art Fest. The reason they did this was that the art was going to be temporarily installed at the library so that both the commissioners and you, the council, could view the art in place and actually see what it would be. The sculpture, excuse me, then the commission discussed the proposal again at their July ninth meeting. After considering the criteria for the selection of public art, the commission unanimously voted to recommend to you the donation of the bookmobile sculpture as a permanent installment in the city's art collection, and staff concur with that recommendation. Happy to take any questions.
Questions, comments? Yes, Eileen.
This project exemplifies the absolute very best of all these folks getting together and making a permanent, wonderful piece of art. I love this installation. It is, it is, it's just a wonder. You can stand there and look at this thing for hours and not see all the different bits and pieces, and I had a chance to chat with the artist, and she was pointing out different elements of it, and that was, that was a lot of fun. I would have never seen all the things that were there. This is, this is just the best of how this process works, and I can't say enough about this piece. It's just, it's us, and it's the past, it's the present, it's the future. It's, it's just really, really an adornment to our, to our community, and I hope everybody gets a chance to go down there and see it, sit on it, play on it. It's just, bring the kids, bring the grandkids. It's really something special, and I highly recommend that we accept this into our permanent collection.
I had a chance to sit on it, had pictures taken. Rose Lee, I think, has pictures of, they're similar with, with some dogs, too. They're there at about the same time, so it's a very, it's a gorgeous piece. Other comments? Or that? Do I hear a motion on this? Eddie.
Motion to adopt this wonderful piece of art. Second.
Move to second. Motion to accept donation of the bookmobile as a permanent installment in the city's art collection. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we go into a couple of discussion items tonight. First one will be about Harvest Drive speed limit and traffic calming. We start with Kevin Gartis, our public works director.
Thank you, mayor. At council's last meeting, council member Chapman brought up at the end a discussion about traffic calming, speed limits, potentially looking at twenty mile-per-hour speed limits on Harvest Drive. So in the interim between the last council meeting and tonight, we've done a little bit of work, just, this was our sense of what the issue was out there. Folks felt people were driving too fast, unsafe, especially with children playing in front yards. And one thing that I had seen in some correspondence from earlier this year, and things I've noticed too when I drive it, is, you know, the controlled intersections are fairly far apart where pedestrians could expect a little bit of a safer crossing, and those are at Kelstar and Harvest and Harvest and Bishop. So it's a lot of stuff here, R C W stuff, so I won't go into it in detail, other than to say, we wanted to go back and look at R C W to see where, how it allows cities to come up with twenty mile-per-hour speed zones. And so I'll summarize this in a short version, but essentially, if it's on an arterial, our reading of R C W is it requires a traffic and engineering investigation. And an arterial is defined as a federally classified street. A federally classified street, functionally classified street, is the way the feds look at it, the state and the city, are arterials, minor arterials, and collectors. And Harvest Drive is a minor collector. It falls into our functionally classified system, therefore it's an arterial, and my determination is that it would need an engineering and traffic investigation to lower it to twenty miles per hour. So where does the twenty miles per hour come from where you don't need an engineering and traffic investigation? And in the reading of R C W, I think that could occur on any residential street that's not functionally classified. So in some of the research I did, Seattle, I saw every residential street in Seattle has a twenty mile-per-hour speed limit on it. has a 20 mile per hour speed limit on it. So my thinking is the reason they did it that way is because RCW says that if you're gonna do it without an engineering and traffic investigation, you have to have a policy to determine how you're gonna make some streets 20 miles per hour and leave some streets at 25, because most local streets are at 25 miles per hour. And I think that would be a huge burden to staff if we had to evaluate each request, and so Seattle probably decided we'll just make all the streets 20 miles per hour. That's my assumption. I did try to call and talk to somebody, but it's really hard to get ahold of anybody in, in traffic in the Seattle Department of Transportation. So what we did was, we kind of went through our typical engineering analysis for Harvest Drive to see what the speed limit should be. So one thing we do is we look at the intended purpose for the street, and I mentioned it's functionally classified street, close proximity to school, does it have active school crossings within the area? And it's close, but the, the school zones are a little bit further away at Franklin and Lincoln. 85th percentile speed, you've heard me mention that before, and that's just been kind of the traditional way that speed limits have been set. You put up counters out there, you do a speed study, and we, we actually have numbers, we went back and looked, and we have them from, I think it's May, late May, early June on Harvest, northbound and southbound. And I put up the 85th percentile, which is, northbound is 28.3, southbound is 27.5. That means 85% of the vehicles were traveling at that speed or below, and then there were 15% traveling above that speed. And the reason speed limits are set using this is we want the majority of the traveling public to be in compliance with the law, and if the street drives this way to 85% of the residents by feel, people drive by feel, then that's probably the appropriate speed from that sense. And then I've put the average speeds up there for northbound and southbound as well. We look at parking practices as part of the engineering investigation, there's really nothing unusual here, it's parallel on-street parking on both sides. Anecdotally, the more cars that park on that street, the narrower the driving lanes get, the slower people drive through there, and I think we've talked about that before at council meetings. We looked at accident history, and Clayton, our Deputy Public Works Director, was able to run the numbers, and we only had one accident in the last 10 years, and that was a car rolling out of a driveway backwards into Harvest. So there really is nothing that would point to a lower speed limit or doing anything from an engineering standpoint to prevent accidents there. Any other special factors? High bike-ped activity? Whether we would look at traffic calming measures with speed reduction or not, you know, I think you've heard me say before, signs themselves without enforcement or traffic calming probably won't necessarily get people to slow down if it, if it drives at a faster, if it feels like it drives at a faster miles per hour. And you can't see the bottom, but Federal Highways Administration has some software I found online, and it's kind of just a cookbook, and it's supposed to help communities that don't have large engineering staffs devoted to traffic, which ours would probably fit that. This is a mess, you can't read it, but it includes crash data, 85th percentile speed, 50th percentile, average day traffic, pedestrian bicycle activity, I put high, other things. I kind of tried to skew it towards a lower speed limit, so I put a lot of driveways on it, I probably overestimated the number of driveways, and wherever I could, highlight something that I thought would perhaps drive the speed down, I did, and the recommended speed limit from this program was 25 miles per hour. So it pretty much jives with what we have out there. So last week, on Wednesday, I met with some of the residents, Councilmember Chapman set that up, and I went out, and we met in the area around Feser Road, and just talked about the issues, and I think the ones that we identified earlier were mentioned. And one of the things that, that I've thought about and we've talked about, we talked about with the residents, was the idea of helping, even on streets where the speed limits, you know, is justified at 25 miles per hour, looking at other factors, like the, the traffic calming on the subdivision you improved earlier tonight, narrowing the streets down, seemed to be a way to help in some of these neighborhoods where we have functionally classified streets, we have a lot of driveways, they look a lot like residential streets, but they're, they have higher traffic volumes on it because of the way the city developed. And also looking at pedestrian crossings. So this is a, this isn't, this is only a two-way stop controlled intersection because traffic coming up Carol Star doesn't have to stop, and that's because in the winter it would be difficult. And then the other one is down at Bishop and Harvest, so there's a pretty wide range of distance here, and there's a path, for those of you out here, I don't know if I had it just right, but it's right here where the road bends, there's a path that goes over towards the elementary school, and so the neighbors mentioned that a lot of kids use that, and that, that would be a good location to look at maybe one of these narrowing traffic calming measures. So that was kind of the result of, the summary of our conversation that we had out there is that maybe within that section, some traffic calming measures would be appropriate. So some of you may remember, all of you may remember, that the city has a project in our CIP to resurface this street next year. It's part of the federal grant money we apply for and get every three years. It's about a million and a half dollar project with an 85% roughly federal grant, and we would resurface spraying Crestview and Harvest between Bishop and Main Street. We're working on the final estimate of that now, and we're looking at potentially incorporating traffic calming in that project, because that would be the time to do it if we're gonna do some narrowing and traffic calming measures such as that. I don't know how many of you have driven on Terraview recently towards a new elementary school, but we did a little pop-up up there where we painted a crosswalk, and then we put plastic delineators in, and, and kind of made a neck, a narrowing with just delineators. It was an idea that came up out of the workshop that, that we had earlier this year about just trying something and putting it down, and the school district had come to us with a question about safe pedestrian crossings across Terraview, and we looked at a location and we put this pop-up pedestrian crossing in. So that's something we could try down here where the path comes off, we could try that, put that up this fall, try it out for a year and see how it works, and that's, that's kind of a summary and my recommendation of what we could do to address traffic calming on that section of Harvest. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, so I just, because we're on the record here, I just want to reiterate, I know Kevin mentioned it, but he did, I appreciate his willingness to go out and meet with the residents. I think they are, they've been really reasonable, and they really appreciated his visit. They, they appreciate, I think, the fact that there's some cost involved for permanent change, and they were very willing to say, let's not touch that until we look at these, this permanent resurfacing. They were very interested in, such as like Short Court, the, the temporary solution, so the, whether it's the curb extensions or, I think you called it pop-outs or whatever, especially where that trail is. I know distance-wise on the road, it is a little far from the school, but, you know, if you include that trail, you know, as the crow flies, it's, I mean, it's pretty close to the, the school, and the kids do walk on it. They really appreciated the, the temporary possibilities that are there. In the meantime, they've taken things into their own hands, and they're parking their vehicles there, and they've made their own narrow street, and so that has cut down on some of that speed, but, you know, I, I just look at this as one instance, it's not, there are certainly unique aspects to this, this street, it's not, it's also a microcosm, I guess, of our neighborhoods and what we're considering, you know, in terms of safety, which I think is really the issue, it's not necessarily just speed, but the safety as well. I, I appreciate the, the discussion about the 25 miles an hour versus the 20, what constitutes an arterial. I still look at, you know, and I would like to consider the Neighborhood Safe Streets Bill, which, you know, if adopted, does not mean that every street has to, to go to 20, albeit with some staff time, I realize, but it does give that option without that, so, without that engineering, and it gives you a year to do it. I mean, I'd like to consider that at least for, for some of these other neighborhood streets as one potential traffic calming. But, but honestly, like, none of these is in, in a silo, I mean, it's all combined, I mean, the engineering is one component of it, the enforcement's one component, and I think a shout-out should go to the police as well, they've been out there monitoring. As I was out there with residents, with Kevin, we had Officer Anderson out patrolling, so they, they were really pleased with that. So, you know, I guess just to wrap it up, which I'm sure Mayor Johnson's happy about, come back to my initial point, I really appreciate, and I think, you know, the residents appreciate that this is being given attention, and we're trying to look for, for some solutions to, to their concerns, which are really, they're very real.
They are very real. And we heard that when they were all here in their, in our council chambers, and we heard from the kids. And I, I talked to a resident this past Sunday, and they were happy, the fact that Kevin and you had been out there today.
Having Kevin on site, too, because of those unique aspects, was really helpful, because he could visualize and, and see what their concerns were rather than just hear about them, and I think that helped to come up with some, at least temporary solutions, just to see how they work, sort of like, you know, a test before we invest.
Eileen.
Can I, again, I'm gonna kind of blindside you with a couple of oddball questions. When we talk about those engineering standards, about the 85th percentile and this and that and the other thing, about, about what dates in our history were those developed?
You mean how long have we been using them for speed?
Yeah.
Probably for quite a long time.
10 years, 20 years?
Probably longer.
Longer. So my, and again, I've talked to a lot of the residents, and it seems to me that maybe we're using an outmoded dataset, or evaluation set, that maybe that was great for 1970 or 1980, but I think we have expressed sympathies in our community that, that point towards getting away from preserving speed. You know, I think our neighborhoods no longer want to preserve speed, they want to preserve the quality of their neighborhood, so I'm not, I'm not sure that that, that serves us, I'm not sure that that, those metrics serve us in terms of serving the desires of our community. I realize that's kind of a much broader philosophical thing, but at some point, you know, you kind of have to turn the page on the old metrics and maybe look at things in a different regard.
Isn't 85% a national?
Yeah, it's typically what all traffic engineers across the country use to set, and it, it's part of, comes out of the MUTCD, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So whenever we set speeds, we have to be able to defend them in case there's accidents, somebody gets hurt, how did, why did you set the speed at this or that? I didn't mention it, but one of the, one of the studies I read looked at, do you cause more accidents by setting the speed artificially lower than it should be? And, and the conclusion was that if it's five miles per hour, five miles per hour lower than the 85th percentile would recommend, or other engineering metrics would recommend, it probably reduces accidents, but if you go more than five, it tends to potentially increase them. You know, it's one study, whether it's conclusive or not, I, I don't know that I put a lot of stock in it, but I think that's the other thing you have to look at, is can you go too far? And I, I guess to go back to your original question, how do you change public behavior?
Start.
So if we use a different metric other than the 85th percentile, let's say we say Harvest Drive should be 20 miles per hour, but everybody's gonna want to drive it faster because that's how it feels to drive, how do you change that behavior? The only way I see to do it is with traffic calming, so that's why I suggested that as the approach.
Can I make one comment on that? So I, I think that that's where, I, I fully agree on the 85%, and I think some of that is outdated. If we do incorporate some of this engineering, I think maybe we'd be able to hit that and lower that speed. I think we'd find that people in are driving slower than, you know, whatever that, that threshold is, just because we've engineered in some solutions. Right now, it's dangerous by design, that doesn't mean that we were, you know, doing what we thought, I mean, we weren't trying to be wrong at the time, but things have changed, right?
Things have changed, no. I think that's, that's, you know, we have to be open to that. Obviously, if we took it down to 12 miles an hour, and you know, once in a great while you see something like that, and it's ridiculous. So you, you do have to be, you do have to, you know, look at what's going on in other communities, and I think it is sparkling clear that the preservation of speed is not something that anybody, that many neighborhoods are, are looking at, at reexamining that.
Any other comments? Okay. Anne.
A quick one. On my way here, I came up Harvest, and Sergeant Umbright was at the bottom, running traffic. And I rolled down my window and said, "Thank you." Hasn't been busy. He said, "No, not too bad," but he said, "People are driving well right now, so, thank you."
Is that when he pulled you over and you put your window down?
Actually, he did not, no, I put my window down, he, I just waved down. My, my biggest, and I drive, I paid a lot more attention driving that road, it is a way for me to get to work without being on Grand Avenue, 'cause my business is at the bottom of base, at the corner of Bishop and Harvest. So sometimes I do take it, and a couple thoughts, and I've said this before, but I really think signage would be helpful, whether it could be school zone or even pedestrian signage. There are no, zero signs from, at least from Carol Star down to Bishop, nothing, not even speed limit signs, actually. Now, it's difficult because there is no parkway, so lawns go right to curb, which goes right to the street, I don't know how you would put signage in, and I think crosswalks would be very important. It doesn't run there or at that trail, I mean, there are children going to an elementary school. To me, I don't know what the, what the rules are for school zone signage, but if you're driving through there and you're not from here, and you don't know that Franklin is back there, you have no idea that you are that close to a school, and there are no speed limit signs, there's no pedestrian, there are no crosswalks. So there are, to me, those are not, those are a different kind of traffic calming as far as messaging to drivers, and I think that's, can be very effective, especially when combined with law enforcement, while we figure out the rest of it.
That is a city-maintained trail, too, I just want to point that out, it's not private, it's, you know, so we're well aware of the, the trail and are maintaining that.
I, I would just make one comment about signs, and I agree with signs, but Brandon and I both live on Sunnymead, and there's a sign about by Brandon's house, it says entering speed, or entering school zone, whatever, and then there's another sign that's two doors down from my house that says, "Okay, now you're leaving." Anecdotally, and I am basing this on my husband's observations, he has not seen any change in behavior of speeds, flying down Sunnymead either one direction or coming up Sunnymead the other way.
Sure.
And I mentioned to Adam earlier today, when I go home on Sunnymead, and if I've got somebody behind me, I put my signal on a couple blocks before I even get to my driveway because they're right behind me and they're going pretty darn fast. So while I am a proponent for signs, unless the signs are coupled with other enforcement activities, and even maybe a sign that has something, Adam and I talked about this one as well, something to do with speed limits strictly enforced, and where there is some active examples of, you know, ticketing and that kind of thing, maybe it's a combined approach.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate it.
So, again, I just share that anecdotally on Sunnymead, which is, I don't know what, is Sunnymead a minor collector?
No.
No, it's not, it's not anything, it's just a local street.
Just the street we live on.
That's become a...
A roller coaster.
It truly is, I mean, some days you just think those cars are gonna just go right off the top of that grade.
May I ask one more question? You talked about narrowing the street in the resurfacing possibility, and this is, I'm sorry, this is a...
And this is, I'm sorry, this is a naive question, but there, and I know a lot of people are purposely parking on the street right now, but how does that impact on street parking availability?
We have to fit it in around existing driveways, so it can be a challenge. But we, on the subdivision you approved earlier, we made provisions to allow for driveways to go in and still have that. So, we'll have to work around the existing driveways, and it, you know, it won't be ideal, maybe, but I'm sure it'll be effective.
Would you go to, like, just only parking on one side, for example?
No, well, I don't know. Until we get in there and start looking at it, we could, if we've got driveways we have to deal with on one side. But I think ideally, it would neck down on both sides towards the center. And those were, the neck downs, the narrowing, is where we'd put the pedestrian crossings.
I've seen some great examples in other cities that even have area where they actually have flower boxes out there. And they really make a nice addition. And it's very clear there's a pedestrian crossing there, but they have actually narrowed that whole scope. I see it through a lot from our Transportation Improvement Board, and we'll see examples from other communities. And I just recently, when I think, I'll let you do something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next comes, item of discussion is sign regulations. And with that is our, out of planning.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, we've got some questions about our sign regulations, so that's the reason for this discussion tonight. The city sign regulations are in Chapter 17.50 of the zoning code, and those standards address both permanent and temporary signs. One type of temporary sign that's pretty common this time of year is the political sign. These signs are protected speech under the First Amendment, so all city's regulations pertaining to these types of signs are generally permissive. Pullman standards do limit the size of political signs to a maximum of 32 square feet, and they require the signs to be removed within 10 days of the election, after the election. But we cannot limit the time in advance of an election that the signs can be posted, and we cannot prohibit them from being placed in the right-of-way. Also, we do allow political signs to be placed on railings or fences in the right-of-way so long as they do not create an unsafe condition and they are not endangering the infrastructure. The rules are different for business signs because they are not allowed in the public right-of-way, and planning staff is taking action currently to get these types of commercial signs removed from the right-of-way. And I'll be happy to answer questions if you have.
Dan.
What about mobile truck signs? Where do those fit in?
Could you repeat that?
Mobile truck signs, like the giant signs on the back of the truck.
As they drive around through town.
And parking in different places.
You may have seen that this past weekend, right? Yeah. Well, I did. There are no regulations pertaining to those, as long as they keep moving. There is a provision in the code that says that you cannot use a sign on the back of a truck or a truck itself that would otherwise be not legal by just parking it somewhere for an extended period of time.
Which we had that last year, where I think it was a campaign. Sign was parked up on Davis Way.
Yes, you came into town by a particular person, right? Yes.
And the vehicle was gone by the time, I mean, the complaints came in, they were relayed to the right people. It was the weekend, but the vehicles were gone by the time the police department...
Time for a football game, as I recall.
Yeah, I think so. I think four people coming into town, and then during the game, they left. So...
Okay. Questions off of that? Thank you very much for the clarification. I kept looking at you.
So, Chapter 17.50, sign regulations. The purpose here, the definition of this chapter is to safeguard the life, health, property, and welfare of the citizens of Pullman, and to promote a quality visual environment by regulating and controlling the design, quality of materials, construction, location, use, illumination, and maintenance of all signs and sign structures visible from public property or right-of-ways. And we go through an awful lot of things in this 22-page section. And I've got a number of questions for you, Pete. Let's go back to your memo to start with. Can you, let's just talk a lot of political signs to start with. You say here, political signs cannot be prohibited from being placed in the public right-of-way. Can you tell me what the definition of public right-of-way is? Because it's not defined in the section. What is public right-of-way?
It's the area that the city has designated for streets and that...
X number of feet past a street.
Streets, sidewalks, utilities.
Usually, it's 60 feet wide, but it depends on when, just like when you accept a plat, it has the street dedicated, that's the right-of-way. It obviously varies because that's, that width has varied throughout the years, topography. But it's, we have maps of where all the right-of-way is.
Washington has a wider right-of-way than we have in the city.
Sure.
Do we see that on Davis Way?
Okay. So, let's talk about roadways and fencing that the city has put up, or construction crews have put up that are part of barriers. Let's, the first example I'll give you is turning off the highway to Moscow onto Bishop Boulevard. There, we had to build a retaining wall there for the road change, and there is a chain-link fence there now. Is that in the public right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have banners and signage that appear on that year-round. There are political signs that appear on that during campaign seasons. Where is it that we say that it's allowed for us to put campaign signs on public right-of-way fences? I mean, who, is that in one of our codes, or is that just because that's, who is "we"?
The principle is based on information that we receive from legal sources like Municipal Research and Services Center that says that we cannot prohibit political signs in the public right-of-way. Again, so long as it's not interfering with traffic flow and creating an unsafe condition.
And I believe those are based on Supreme Court precedent in Washington.
Correct. Correct. So, all we can do in terms of regulating signage in the right-of-way, especially political speech, which receives the highest protection under the Constitution, is impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. So, that's where, if a sign is posted such that it obstructs vision or turning ability, something like that, that it creates a hazard, then we would be able to go out and take it down and move it. But otherwise, if, you know, I understand what you're talking about in terms of fences that the city owns that they've installed, it's within the right-of-way, and as long as that protected speech isn't infringing on a safety issue, then my advice is always going to be, let it be, because the risk of taking it down is substantial.
Okay, that's political signs. What about the commercial signs, advertising a business off premises? And with their sign in the public right-of-way? Or on the fence?
Right. As I mentioned, those signs are in violation of code, and you mentioned that they do appear there periodically. In the case of the signs that are currently located on the fence that you mentioned on Bishop Boulevard, those are in all zoning code administration, or enforcement matters. So, they're currently in the enforcement portion of our activities.
Okay. So, I do have a question. You say that planning staff monitors the placement of signs and things, and, you know, it's not periodically that they're up, they're up year-round. And then there are new ones that appear. There's also another fence down on Bishop Boulevard closer to the little strip mall that has advertising of businesses and things that's on it. And if you just drive around town, there's a lot of our property, public right-of-way, that has signage on it that, you know, we let one go, and then the next business puts theirs on there, and everybody else puts theirs on there. And it's, it does not follow our purpose of our signage regulations, in what I see. And I think it's not very eye-pleasing. I understand the political sign situation, but I don't like that either. We've got them going up on bridges, fences, all over the place. I understand, Laura, you're talking about it being against the rights. Is there anything we can do to prevent that with the political signs?
No.
Okay. All right. I've got another question for you. In regards to commercial signage on buildings with their name or whatever it is, there is a formula that you use on how big and how much sign they can have. What is that formula?
There are multiple portions of the code that speak to that. So, the maximum size of any sign is 200 square feet. You're talking about maybe signs that are placed on a wall, wall-mounted signs?
Yes.
Okay.
Flush-mounted signs.
Yes. You've read your code.
I have.
The sign, any individual sign is limited to two square feet per linear foot of wall length on which the sign is placed. So, if you have a 100-foot wall length and the maximum size is 200 square feet of sign area for that wall.
Okay.
And then, there are other regulations that pertain to signs in individual zoning districts.
Yes.
Like in the C2 Zone, 100 square feet is the maximum in this, which is downtown. The C3 General Commercial Zone, that's 200 square feet maximum. So, it does depend on where the sign is placed.
So, since you mentioned it, let's talk about the C2 Zone in the Central Business District downtown. There is verbiage in this that talks about, the C2 Central Business District was first constructed circa 1900, and that we really kind of tried to stick with things in downtown with that. The verbiage is actually, should be in harmony with the above characteristics. And there's recently a new construction of a building downtown that, let me ask you this, is an individual ladder that's put on the side, how do you determine the square footage of that ladder?
It is the, what we do is we...
The height and width of it, even though it's...
We take the smallest geometric figure that can fit around that ladder and measure that.
Okay. And then, when you have things, an application for a sign, and you have one in the C2 District, is there, if it doesn't fit the characteristics, how do you get around that and allowing that to happen? Is there a zoning code change? Is there a conditional use permit? Who decides that? How does that come into play?
The code outlines how we administer that portion. And the portion that you read from has to do with the historic buildings downtown, the ones that are understood as being historically significant. And it does say that the city planner, when reviewing an application for signage of a building, shall determine whether or not the exposed facade of the building is representative of the turn of the century, commercial architecture found in Pullman. And then, if so, it talks about what standards shall apply. And then, we should consult with the Main Street Design Committee, so that shows you how long ago that was. Or, a similar group recognized by the City Council to determine if the signage will be consistent with the architectural integrity of the particular building. So, if there was a question at this point, our most likely go-to committee would be the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. I'm just, this leads into other things with downtown and trying to stay with our harmony of downtown. I'll just leave that for another, further discussion. There's also parts in here that talk about signage having to be in good repair and that type of thing. And there's plenty of signage in town that is not in good repair. And is the planning department, it says you guys are the ones in charge, looking at that? Do you ever stop at businesses and talk to them about it? Do we do any of that?
I will admit, it's been a while since we have spoken with anyone about their signage being in disrepair. That probably would be something that complaint to the planning department would inspire us to act.
Since you're only out of one person right now, and trying to get everything else done, is that something you could refer to the code? Is that something you refer to the code enforcement people?
Yes. So, certainly, we could make use of the code enforcement folks. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it really hasn't come up much as a high priority among the citizenry that we're typically engaged with in conversation. And so, we really got other priorities that we have to do.
Sure. Years of disrepair are, become not eye-pleasing to people, and then eventually, you just don't see it anymore because you're used to the way that it looks.
Go ahead.
How about...
Point's taken.
How about writing on the sides of buildings, advertising products that they sell? Is that signage? Is that advertising?
If it's a product or service that they offer at that business, then it's a sign.
Okay. And when we see those types of things that are probably violating the sign... ...regulation here, what do we do? Do we go there? Do we, I mean, do you have to have a complaint?
No. If the planning department staff sees a sign that is in violation of the code, then we act on it. We don't need a complaint to act on it, and we commonly do see signs that are outside the confines of the regulations, and we act on it. But if there is a sign that a citizen sees, and they wonder whether that complies with code, then we appreciate them coming to us and bringing it to our attention. And we'll act on it.
That type of thing is signage, then, on the side of a building?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just to keep going a little bit here, how about posters and signs on power poles and that type of thing in town? Advertising, garage sale, I lost my cat, I lost my cat, we're having meetings here, that type of thing.
I can answer that. So, there's, of course, been litigation about that. City of Seattle selectively enforced removal of commercial signs, but left things like garage sale, rummage sale, estate sale signs alone on street poles. And it was deemed by the State Supreme Court that you can't do that, your enforcement has to be uniform. So, it's all or nothing. So, we do have regulations that say you can't attach anything to our power poles, but don't forget, we don't own all of the power poles in the city. So, that's attaching it to city property, and it's not permitted, that's not their use. But we have to, that means we have to, you have to have city staff available, go around and take down every garage sale sign that gets tacked up on a Saturday or a Friday.
And the posting of flyers is in a different section of code that planning staff does not administer, it's not part of Chapter 17.
Flyers is not?
Flyers is not.
Right. That's not a sign.
But we don't allow that on our power poles?
Don't allow it? No, we don't. We don't.
Well, I'm the one that brought this up to talk about signage. I've been asking for this to be brought up for a long time. I was trying to get it out before political season got here, and nothing bends anybody running in office. But it's, you know, I think we need to take an active role in enforcing our rules on signage. I understand you're busy, but that, to me, is not an excuse. The signage needs to be enforced. The signage needs to be enforced, and I think if it's all or nothing, then we need to do all. And I think that it goes back to the purpose of the reason that we have the sign regulation is to make everything look nice. Right? We want our community to look good, and, um, I just think that that's something that we need to continue to work on all the way around.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments.
Mayor, can I add one thing? So without, without naming the business, um, I did have a resident email me about writing on a wall that would constitute a sign, and I sent it to Pete, and Pete went out and talked to the owner about that plus violation, so.
That was taken care of.
And Mayor, if I can add, if you have citizens complain about signs to you, make sure you forward that to the planning department so that they can follow up on enforcement, because I, I've worked with them multiple times on sign code violations.
The one that really got to me was a garage sale that they attached to our clock in front of a library.
Oh, jeez.
That's, and it was big, and it was a.
Public right-of-way?
No.
It was attached to our city property.
City building.
They probably didn't go and pick it up after the garage sale.
If it's that close to the road.
Yeah.
But it, it's in the right-of-way, and just as an example of the difference between city-owned property and right-of-way, so if political signs or signs of any sort are placed in city parks, um, Parks Crew removes those as soon as they discover them. They store them, um, at the park shop, and, and when people call and say, "Someone stole my sign," the answer is, "No, you put your sign on city property, and that's not permitted." And because they assume that because they can put it on any city right-of-way or public right-of-way, but that also means they can put them in a public park, at the library, that's not the case. So Park Staff does enforce violations where, where things are posted, um, in, on city property as compared to right-of-way.
Seems to me that it's really difficult to define between right-of-way and public and our property.
That's why we have the maps. It's very, it's actually quite easy to define.
Okay. I'll be getting a map.
Okay. Then we now move to new business, and new business to come before the council tonight. Saying none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? We adjourn.